Alright, so good evening, parents, guardians, students of McLean High. And welcome to our spring 2021 dual enrollment town hall. My name is Monref Arun and I am the coordinator for the college and career readiness. And this is a mandatory meeting for multiple students who are in a particular CTE class as well as English 1A. And today we will be sharing a lot of information that pertains to dual enrollment that will start in spring. Especially as you have noticed, we sent out a parent regarding, parent letter a few days ago regarding the dual enrollment. Now, just to let you know that there's going to be a lot of information and this event will be recorded that you can view back and see what you have missed and what you need to do in your part. And same thing for students. We want to make sure that you understand the parts of dual enrollment. Why dual enrollment is important and why you should pay attention? As we're going to talk about application process, we're going to talk about the registration form and class and so on. So with that said, I do would like to begin our presentation. So let me just go and share my screen just to make sure. Make sure I get here. Alright, so. So again, thank you. And then just keep in mind that on this Teams Live platform, you notice that there is a Q and A, a live end Q and A sessions that if you have any questions, feel free to type in your questions into the chat box and I will look through and answer them at the end of this presentation. So again, welcome to dual enrollment town hall for spring of 2021. So let's next one. So today's items we are going to be talking about is what to know about dual enrollment? The benefits of dual enrollment, the long-term impact of dual enrollment, the eligibility requirements to enroll in dual enrollment. We are also going to talk about the Open CC Apply application process which will open tonight, actually will open tonight at midnight on October 1st. And then the next steps is the dual enrollment registration form and the to-do list. And at the end, we'll look at the questions from the audience and we will answer them live to you as well. Alright, so what to know about dual enrollment? So dual enrollment was started about four years ago where Fresno Unified School District in partnership with the State Center Community College District, you know, offering high school students the opportunity to take free dual enrollment college courses where students may get credit for high school and college altogether. So these are, these courses are offered to CTE students, our career pathway students at McLean High School to enroll in this Fresno City College dual enrollment so they can take a college course while still in high school. And also on top of that, we do offer the options of offering dual enrollment to English 1A to our exposatory reading and writing composition course as well. And we'll go into that in a bit as well. So let's talk about the benefits of dual enrollment. Why should you partake in dual enrollment? First of all, it is free to high school students. Normally, it costs about forty-six dollars per unit and depending on what courses. So if the college courses about is worth three units, you multiply that forty-six times three and that is your actual course cost for the whole semester. Now, because they're high school students, they get to take these college courses for free. And the benefits is that it is offered on high school campuses. They don't have to go down to Fresno City College to actually take the course off campus. They can take it inconveniently within on our high school campuses and facilitate with our high school teachers. Another key benefit is that it's an accelerated path through college saving time and money. It means that by the time they finish, by the time they graduate high school, students can potentially walk out anywhere from three units of college credit up to fourteen units of college credit. And then these college credits are transferable through CSU, through UC. And you know, and these electives will count depending, some may count as elected, some may recount as a course. And then it saves time. So when students advance to college, they've already ahead of most first-year college students. Like for example, if a student in our medical pathway, if the students proceeds with every college course including English 1A, they could potentially walk out with anywhere from nine to fourteen units of college credits, saving one semester. So meaning that they save not just only time but also money as well because these college courses are free to them. And especially for those who are wanting to advance in the career technical education pathways. You know, if you, especially if you want to go into the medical field or into arts media and entertainment or in teacher academy in that teacher track, you want to become a teacher, we have those courses offered here at McLean. So that way it's, you know, we fast-track them to that course. So that way it saves time and they can actually finish the program earlier. And not only that, because they are enrolled as college students, they have access to all of Fresno City College benefits and services. So they can actually get a Fresno City College ID card and use it as a bus pass. So Fresno City College do offer bus passes through their ID where they use their ID cards and swipe when they get on the fax buses. Potentially those cost five dollars, but those are five dollars per semester for unlimited ride. So meaning they can use as many time as they want. And also along with those Fresno City College ID card, they have access to ASV services and discounts. So with those college ID card, they can get discounts from any restaurants that offer discounts to Fresno City College students. And as a Fresno City College students, they do have access to the library. So they can actually go to Fresno City College and access the library resources and multiple ASV events there as well. So meaning that they're also, they're still in high school, but they're also college students. So these are the benefits of dual enrollment. Now, the next one, I do not want to sound very harsh, but I do want to discuss the long-term impact of dual enrollment. Where there could be some consequences, you know, whether if a student succeed or do not, or don't succeed. Keep in mind, these dual enrollment college courses are actually real college classes. Meaning it's the same rigor, they're taking the courses if a student at college are taking. So we use the same textbooks as Fresno City College uses. And some of the classes are actually taught by our Fresno City College instructor, like our summer course of HIT 10, which is facilitated with our Fresno City College instructor. And please note that it is a lifetime grade on the college transcript. So even if they're still in high school, if they take this college course, whatever grade they get, it is a lifetime grade on the college transcript and it will transfer throughout higher institutions. So it may affect, you know, future college university enrollment eligibility or even financial aid eligibility. So let me just give you one example to why this is a long-term impact. So for example, student A is taking a dual enrollment course here at McLean High School. Say for example, GRC 27, but the student, but the student did not actually succeed and receive a letter grade F in that college course. What happened is that F is on that transcript and it brings the overall, the cumulative GPA to a zero point zero zero. Now, when the student that student graduated from high school applies for college, especially for financial aid and financial aid does look at a cumulative GPA requirement. You need to maintain a GPA to receive financial aid. So if a student does not do well, because the students already failed his or her first college course in high school, that transfer over and then financial aid may deny financial assistance. Now, in the opposite way, if a student did very well, you know, scored an A and as soon as applying through UCLA for example, or one of like, you know, top Ivy League universities, university will look at their eligibility like, hmm, this student can't, you know, got an A, a four-point-oh GPA in a college class while still in high school. So in their decision, they will, you know, take the students in because the students has proved, the students can actually demonstrate performance, performance in a college class. So that's why that would mean long-term impact, it could mean both ways, could mean in a positive way or in a negative way. So it's very important that when students take these courses, we advise you to take it very seriously because it does have a long-term impact and it does not go away, even though ten years down the road, like say I decide I do not want to go to college. Ten years later, you might end up applying for college and then that grade will still come back because it's, because it is on record. So it's very important that when taking this course, we do expect you to succeed, to pass this course. And just not just to pass by basically just a C, we expect you to go A because you, who knows, there's a long-term impact. And, and another story. So another student, and this is a true story by the way, so a student tried to apply for a program, okay, at a four-year university at the CSU where they require a four-point-oh cumulative GPA of a college. So the students in her first year of college did very well, all As. But just that one college course in high school that that student took, got a C. And then that brought the overall GPA from a four-point-oh to a three-point-nine-nine and applying that program, it did take a toll because they say they want a four-point-oh, but the student did not know that that college course in, the student took in high school actually made an impact in that cumulative GPA. So it's, you know, like I said, it's very important that you take it seriously. So I cannot stress enough, but it's very, very important that students do take it seriously. Alright, what are the minimal requirements of dual enrollment? So in dual enrollment, not A, O, S, every student can participate. There's certain minimal requirements. First of all, they have to be at current high school. So for the CTE pathway courses, they need to have a cumulative GPA of a two-point-oh or higher to be enrolled. So if they're below, they're not qualified. For the English 1A course, they need a minimum of two-point-five GPA to participate in the English 1A course. And students must have a commitment of maintaining a satisfactory academic progress in a regular college course, meaning that the students will need to succeed because we do not want students to fail. Like I said earlier, there is a long-term impact. So students who wanting to do this must have commitment of ensuring that you will be successful. So that's who we want. So here's the question. So that may come up. What if I do, do not meet the minimal criteria to participate in a dual enrollment class? So the answer is that you still can participate only for the CTE program. So such as our medical pathways, our video productions, our teacher academy, if you did not have a cumulative GPA of two-point-oh or higher, you still can participate. But then you will need a letter of support from a parent or guardian verifying and confirming that you will pass the course successfully. So it's very important because, you know, the reason why Fresno City College put that restriction of a two-point or higher because in a college level class, a C is a passing grade. So a D is, does not really count as a passing grade to them. So a C or above. And then if you're in that below, but do still want to take, you still can, you will need a letter of support, you know, verifying and confirming that you will pass the course because we do not want you to fail. We want you to take the course and pass it successfully. Now here's another question that comes up between dual enrollment versus AP courses. So AP courses are very popular, you know, they've been here around for longer than dual enrollment. And but I want to do a side-by-side comparison. What is the difference between dual enrollment and advanced placement? So for AP courses, you only earn college credits when you pass the AP exam and score with a three or higher. So meaning that you, in order to receive credits, you have to score the three or higher. Versus dual enrollment, you earn college credit based on the units. So when you successfully complete the course, so there's no exam and there's, yeah, there's a midterm exam in the course and a final exam. But overall semester-wise that you need to score, you need to pass it with a C or higher to earn that college credit. And it's by units. So like English 1A would be worth four units. Our HIT 10 courses, medical terminology is worth three units. Our video production is worth three units. So it depends on what courses. But then like I said, college credit will be earned when you complete the program. When you complete the course, you will earn college credit. In AP, you need to pass the exam to earn the college credits. Now, another one is the semester grade. So AP courses, the semester grade that you get for your AP courses only remains on the high school transcript. So even though you pass the exam, you're just getting the credit for college, but the grade doesn't really transfer over to a college transcript. Versus where semester grade for dual enrollment classes will be recorded on a high school transcript and college transcript altogether. So if you got an A in the college courses, it will be both on your high school transcript as well as your college transcript. So keep in mind that they are, they go both ways. And versus like in AP courses, like you get a D, so it stays within high school. So remember, that's why it's very important that there is what we call a long-term impact on these dual courses. Because if you get a D, it go both on your high school transcript and your college transcript. So you know, that's why we want you to be successful. Versus for AP, there's also no harm, no foul to the college academic GPA if you did not pass the AP exam or the AP course. So like I say, you did not score the three or higher, there is no harm or foul, you just do not get the college credit. Whereas in dual enrollment, that if you do fail the course, you know, and a passing grade for dual enrollment course has to be C or higher. So anywhere below a C, there will be a negative effect because it will bring your college GPA down. And then another one is that there's no impact on the college community GPA. I mentioned earlier on students' performance. So the lifetime, like you, you know, the grade with your AP courses stay within the high school. You're just only getting the college credit that earned. But there's no grades attached versus dual enrollment, there's a grade attached, there's what we call a letter grade attached. And it is a lifetime impact on the GPA. So it stays there, you know. So we want to make sure that you, you do understand that you have to succeed in these courses in order, because it does have the impact on the community GPA on your college. Because not knowing that it carries on and sometimes we'd like to think that, oh, after high school, it starts fresh, it would be a straight A. But not knowing that these courses here in our dual enrollment does carry over because it is an actual college course. So that's, you just want to verify that. Here's another ask questions. So what if I do not want to participate in a dual enrollment course? So that's a very good question. You may opt out of dual enrollment, but it does not exempt you from the course content of dual enrollment as it's, it is part of our CTE program. So our medical health careers, our medical assisting class, our cinematography, our education psychology, entry to education. In our course curriculum, it has, as we submit through our A, because we do get A or G credits. You look at our course catalog, it's in public too. You look at our UC articulations. Our CTE course does have mentioned about dual enrollment. So like for example, like our medical health careers, it says in our course content, students will complete medical terminology. So if a student's opt out of dual enrollment, they still have to do the course content. So they still have to do the work for the medical terminology. It's just that they will not earn the college credit. They will just only earn the high school credit only. If you opt in to dual enrollment, you will earn the credits for both high school and both college. So I hope that makes sense. And then for the English 1A folks, you will need to drop out from that ERWC course, that period two and period five. If you do not want to participate in the dual enrollment course because that course is strictly all English 1A. So it's ERWC periods two and periods five with Mr. Garcia. So make sure if you want to opt out, you will have to schedule your appointment with your counselors to actually drop the course and enroll a different ERWC course. For our CTE courses, you can still stay in, it's just that you, and you were still required to do the college courses. It's just that you won't receive any college credits. So I hope that makes sense. Alright, so also I want to emphasize is the dual enrollment during COVID-19. So as the State Center Community College District has officially announced that all college courses will be 100% online for spring of 2021, even if high schools were to open. So assume that spring we do get back and we're not, we're not so sure what the circumstances is of reopening schools. Just stay tuned to our board meetings, what's the official announcement. But even though if, you know, we were to open the instructor, like our, for example, like our medical terminology, which is taught by a Fresno City College instructor and possibly like our other CTE dual enrollment courses, that will be most likely 100% online and they will do the classes all online. And here's another important part is that even in an event where high school grades were to be waived due to a disastrous event, and this is a perfect example of what happened in March, not long ago. Where the superintendent announced that they will not penalize students semester two grades. So they were based on quarter three grades only, but that doesn't carry over to college. So college grades will not be waived. So even the high school announced, they say that we will waive your grade, college will not because they're a separate institution. And for those who took dual enrollment last year in medical terminology, who are currently seniors right now, know this. When schools shut down in March and when they say they're only based on quarter three grades, but their college class, class had to move on. So students still had to log on to Canvas and actually complete their college course. Unless State Center Community College announced officially that they will waive something and it will be on their own terms as well. So it doesn't, you know, say like, if we Fresno Unified announce something, it will not correlate to the State Center Community College District. So just keep in mind that any event like that, just keep in mind that if this were to happen again, just know that the college courses needs to continue and move on. Students will still need to log in and complete these courses. Now there's important key dates that's going to happen. And so for our, our open registration window starts tonight, actually at midnight, October 1st. That's when the Open CC Apply opens and will run up until November 13th of 2020. Then spring, then these dual enrollment courses will actually begin on January 11th, 2021. So first day we get back for winter break. And then if you enrolled and decide, say this is not for you, this is hard, you can drop the course. But there's certain, there's some criterias. If you want to drop without a W on a transcript, meaning that there's no record on your college transcript at all, you must drop before by January 29th of 2021. And then the last day to drop with a W on a transcript, which is March 12th. So a W on a transcript mean that it won't count against you, you won't get an F or it won't count towards your GPA, but it will mention in the transcript that you attempted to take the course, but you withdraw the course. So there are two ways. So if you don't want that W on the transcript, it will be January 29th. And with a W on the transcript will be March 12th. And then there's spring break aligned with our Fresno Unified spring break as well. And keep in mind that there's finals. So Fresno City College do have finals, which is anywhere from May 10th to May 20th. So meaning the dual college courses finish before high school. So like our last day of high schools in June, the first week of June versus our dual enrollment courses finish, finish a little bit early. So the semester ends on May 21st of 2021. And that's when we get our final grade as well. So what are we going to offer for this spring of 2021? So for our medical health career class, our junior class will be offering HIT 10, which is medical terminology, which is a three-unit college course. For our medical assisting class and our medical pathway will be offering medical, legal and ethic concepts, which is a two-unit class. Our cinematography class will be offering GRC 27, which is a digital video production class worth three units. Our education psychology will be offering Child Development 1, which is a principle of and practices of teaching young children, which is also a three-unit college course. Our personal finance will be offering Beginner Microsoft Excel, which is a one-unit course. And our ERWC periods two and five only, we will be offering English 1A, which is a four-unit college course. Now, there's two more courses that are still being pending. And Fresno Unified is working closely with the State Center Community College District, but we're looking forward to offer two more additional courses to our two more CTE courses. So our entry to education, we're hoping to have Education 30, which is the introduction to teaching a three-unit college course or somewhere, or another course that is equivalent. And I do have a meeting with the State Center Community College District along with Fresno Unified to discuss those options and hopefully we get those Education 30 as we wish. But if not, we do have something equivalent. So they were our banking and finance. We are hoping to offer two of these courses or at least one of them. Fresno City College proposed that we do take BT 24, a Beginner Microsoft Excel, which is a one-unit and BT 131, which is Applied Accounting. And with these two courses together, you do get a bookkeeping fundamental certificate from Fresno City College. So you complete just those two courses, you get a certificate. Now, well, this is still impending and there's some works as Fresno Unified School District and the State Center Community College are actually discussing, see how can we offer two of these courses? And there's potential discussion that maybe BT 24 can be offered during the winter break. Because the BT 24 class is only 18 hours. And if you really want to, if for students who want that bookkeeping fundamental certificate, this is a good option for them as well. And we will make the announcements once we know, but these are pending offerings. So hopefully we have some time soon or later this week as well. Alright, get to the fun part. So Open CC Apply. So before we even register for dual enrollment, every student's need to apply through the Open CCC Apply. And you need to apply. And I noticed, I do realize that some students already have an account, already applied for fall 2021 for Fresno City College already. So these students already have an Open CC Apply. But then you still need to log in and very careful, it's very important that when we complete this application, there's certain specifics. So unlike when, especially for seniors who already did their Open CC Apply account, the process is a little bit different. And I'll show you that in a bit. And there's also a video by Fresno City College to show you how to register properly. So prior to register for dual enrollment, you will need to apply for the dual enrollment with Fresno City College through CCC Apply. And for new students, if you finish applying, you will receive a college student's ID number, which is a seven-digit and a college email address. So you'll be getting that as well. So previous, early in this week, posted on Teams, students should have already got a handout that gives the instructions how to complete the online Fresno City College dual enrollment application. So there's a video, there's a YouTube video and it tells specific details, what to do and what don't to do. And there's also some FAQs, some frequently asked questions as well. And then some students may already have a CC Apply account. So for students, for example, students who took the dual enrollment last year as a junior, so that's our HIT 10, medical terminology and our child development one, who last year took us as juniors. So now this year they're seniors. So they should have, already have a college ID and a CC Apply account. Or they may transfer from a high school. So if you from Clovis High School or from Sangar High School, because these high schools do offer dual enrollment courses as well. So you should have, already have an Open CC Apply and a college ID number as well as an email address. Or seniors, our current seniors who already applied for fall 2021 with their counselors in this past date, weeks ago with one of our senior counselors. They've been hosting these workshops to create an Open CC Apply account. And then students will have to log in with their, so for those who are at accounts, they just, all they have to do is make sure they log in with their user. they just, all they have to do is make sure they log in with their user, username and password. So do not forget. So I hope you do remember your username and password. For those who have already had history applying for uh, these SCCCD should already have a seven college ID number, meaning that they should have already a college ID number on file and that does not change. That is lifetime. So thinking that, oh, I apply again, I will get a new ID. No, this college ID will remain even ten years down the road. Uh, where you apply back to college, that ID will pop up because that's your uh, permanent college ID number. And then when we say SCCCD colleges, so some thought it's just only Fresno City College. It could pertain to Clovis Community College, Ridley College, Madera Community College or, or Oakhurst. So if you apply for one of these colleges in the previous year, you already have an Open CC Apply account. So like for example, if students who transferred from Sanger High School, they did their dual enrollment with Ridley College. So they already have, so their username for the CC Apply is the same. Their college ID numbers remain the same and their password and their email remains the same. So nothing changed. We're just applying for Fresno City College. So I hope that makes sense to you guys. Now for new students, for those who do not have a CC Apply account yet, you will need to create one, especially for juniors who are taking HIT ten in the medical health career class with Mrs. Yang and Mrs. Flores or with Mrs. Salinas, the education psychology class. So you will need to use a permanent personal email rather than using your school email. So uh, so when you sign up, please do use a personal email because this is lifetime account. Your school email will not last forever because once you graduate from McLean, uh, you, that email goes away. So you do want to use your permanent personal email. Now you, if you don't have one yet, you can use your school email right now. But then in the meantime, you need to update it, make sure that you use a permanent personal email. So that way uh, you can reset your password. You will also need your social security number if you're declaring that you are a US citizen. Now for those who are undocumented, uh, you don't have to declare it. You just have to mark that you're undocumented. So that way Fresno City College knows that uh, there, so they can process your application. But for those who are marked as US citizens, you do need a social security number because uh, I mean, you don't have to declare it, but then the process of the application will take slower. So that's my experience in the past. We do, if, and it's also they're permanent because we advise you to use your social security number because in case you want to apply for financial aid, for any benefits. And remember, instead of, you know, having to go back and doing all this again, it's better to have it on file. Because of your Open CC Apply account is a lifetime account. So it won't change this. And then once you apply, you will receive your college ID number and your title of the email is from the SCCD admission and records within twenty four to seventy, seventy two hours. So depending how uh, fast they work, but if you did it properly, it's, it's fast. So you get it within the next day. Now importantly, things to keep in mind, when you complete the Open CC Apply, there's two things, very, very important. When you're applying, when you choose the term applying, you need to apply for spring twenty twenty one high school enrichment slash dual enrollment. So you will see other options such as spring twenty twenty one or fall twenty twenty high school enrichment. Please pick spring, make sure it's this exact phrase. Spring twenty twenty one high school enrichment slash dual enrollment. And then the other part is that uh, there's another question to ask you, college enrollment status. Uh, you are enrolling in college or lower grade at the same time. So if you happen to select other options, what happened is that you, they uh, the system doesn't, does not tag you as a high school student and you will get a financial bill charging for those units. So that's why, and so it's very important that you mark these options because if you do not mark these uh, later in down the weeks, when you start college, Fresno City College will send a bill. This is how much you're taking English one A and this, this is how much your total costs. So in order to avoid getting that bill, uh, you want to mark these. So spring twenty twenty one, high school enrichment and enrolling in high school. So that way you do not get the bill from Fresno City College. Because remember, we say it's free, it is free, but uh, on your part, you do have to select the right term. So that's why uh, I think some of you got ahead and tried to apply ahead of time and were wondering, it weren't there yet. It's not there yet until October first. So starting midnight, you will actually see it. Um, so that's why we had this dual town hall meeting to make sure that you know before even proceeding. Another one is that when completing the Open CC Apply, make sure all information match your legal document, such as your first, middle and last names. Because if you misspell them, that will carry on the transcript and also onto your certificate and diploma. So make sure that you want to use the first, middle, last thing, your legal one that you want to use. Cause it has to match with your social security card, your birth certificate and all of that. So make sure it is your legal name. And do not confuse that your school ID number, your, your current McLean High School ID number and your college ID number are two different things. So there's another ID number you have to keep track. So your six digit is only used within Fresno Unified purposes. So like if you're getting, you know, working with our McLean High School staff or the Fresno Unified, you use your school student ID number. But your college student ID number, uh, it is for SCCD purposes. So like your, you know, you want to access your transcript, your college transcript. They will ask for your seven digit college ID number or get on Web Advisor, on Canvas or even on Office three sixty five, their email, because remember you have a college email, you will be getting, uh, you have to be using your uh, call it uh, using those college ID number to retrieve because they will ask that. And when you log into your portal, your Office three sixty five, your Canvas within Fresno City College, you have to use your college ID number. So make sure uh, keep those two things separate apart. So you're uh, if you're enrolled in dual enrollment, you will do get a college email address. So your default email address is your seven digit college ID number at my dot SCCD dot edu. So for example, if your college ID number is zero, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that's just an example. At my dot SCCD dot edu. So that is your default email, your college email. And this is lifetime. So this will never go away. And your default email password is your first letter of your first name, which is uppercase and the first letter of your last name lowercase and your six digit date of birth. So for example, if your name is John Doe and you were born on February twenty sixth, nineteen ninety six, then your password would be capital J, lowercase d, zero, two, two, six, nine, six. And remember, this is all lifetime. Then after, once you log in, uh, you can actually change your password. So you can change your password the way how you want it. Just make sure you remember it. Other things to keep in mind that Fresno City College use Canvas as their primary learning management system. So all assignments are posted on Canvas. This is why in our, uh, if parents, if you notice that our medical class are using Canvas for their regular medical class, our medical health careers, our medical assisting. Uh, is that because to train them to get used to Canvas, how to submit assignments on Canvas? So when springs come, they're set to go. So they just have to log in to their Canvas via Fresno, uh, Fresno City College. And they can actually access to discussion board, lectures and assignments. And their email is also same like our school email, which is Office three sixty five. So instead of logging, if they want to check their college email, instead of logging in with their FresnoU.org, they just log with their my dot SCCD dot edu account and your password and they can access to their college email. Because uh, Fresno City College instructor will be communicating them via the college email. So for those who are in dual enrollment, make sure that you check both your Fresno Unified email and your SCCD college email as well. And you have access to Web Advisor to download your unofficial transcripts. So here's a question about Open CC Apply. Can I just Google to go to the CC Apply page? Yeah. So some, you know, like texted me and I'm guilty myself. We just go like, okay, instead of going to the process, I'm just going to Google CC Apply and then hit login. So the answer is no, even though uh, you can, even though you can log in through CC Apply via different methods. But uh, our State Center Community College District keeps track, a separate list with special links to identify which students who are taking dual enrollment courses. Failure to do this may result not showing a dual enrollment registration roster. So we had some of this incident last year where some students just Google and apply and then we submit their application. They say they cannot find them. They did not apply through CC Apply. So it's very important that they follow the process. They have to go through the Fresno City College website, click on dual enrollment and apply online and that link is in that handout. And there's a video describing it. So make sure that when you apply for the uh, Fresno City College Open CC Apply, make sure that there's uh, they go to that specific link that we provided them. And that link will be provided on the Teams as well. I'll be posting that direct link. So they cannot just Google to CC Apply. They will need that specific link. Here's another question. I do not remember my login credentials to CC Apply. Can I just create a new one? The answer is no. Your CC Apply is linked with your social security account and your college ID number. So if you create a new account with the same social security number, will result in error because it will kick back. Because they say, the system noticed that you already used, you already used that social security number once. And it may result in I, identity fraud investigation. So very important. So if you do have, if you, if you don't remember, do not create a new one. Just uh, contact Fresno City College to reset your password or you can do my, forget my password. As long you know which email goes to, because it goes to your personal email and you can reset your password from there. So very, very important. Now uh, to help all of you, we will be offering uh, assistance during class time to help with the Open CC Apply applications. So these are the timeframe with parents. So we advise parents or guardians or brothers or sister uh, with students. Please uh, do uh, look at the timeframe here. Uh, this is where uh, our, so like our medical assisting class will be on October sixth. For periods three and four will be on, at ten fifteen AM. Our period six, seven will be at eleven thirty AM, our medical health careers and so forth. Uh, we will be there assisting and if you can be by your side with your uh, children or child uh, to help with the assistant of applying these Open CC Apply accounts. Because uh, it is very tedious work and we want to make sure that we do have accurate information. So very, very important. And um, so our medical health careers will be on, for period two will be on October twelfth. Our medical health career, period three will be on October fifteenth. Medical health career, period four, four will be on October fourteenth. Our personal finance period two will be on October eighth. Personal finance period three will be, will be on October seventh. Banking and finance period four will be on October eighth. Our cinematography class period three will be on October ninth. Our education psychology period five will be on October seven. And our entry to education period six will be on October eighth. And these are the timeframes. For our English one A folks, will be on October sixteen for period two and October fifteen for periods five. Now for those students who are in both CT pathways, who are in a medical pathway or business pathway or a vid-, a cinematography, art venture pathway or teacher academy and also doing English one A at the same time, you only need to do one Open CC Apply application. So if you already done it, if you are apply for the spring twenty twenty one high school dual enrollment, you're done. And most likely, uh, if you're in a medical class, you most likely have done it before we reach out to the English one A. So remember, you just only have to submit one application. So you don't have to do twice. As long as most important thing like I said is you can apply for the spring twenty twenty one high school enrichment slash dual enrollment. Next thing, so once you receive your college ID number, for new accounts, you will need to submit your college ID number to your teacher. Because we will prepare what we call a registration form, which I will about to show you in a bit. Because you will need your college ID for that registration form. So I post, as you notice, students who are in these particular classes on Teams, I did create an assignment saying to submit your college ID number. If you already have one, please do submit it. If you haven't done the Open CC Apply yet, uh, you will have to wait until you create one. Once you apply, then in, within twenty four hours to uh, seventy two hours, you will get a college ID number. Um, and then submit it through our Teams. And then here's another, I have one question coming through. What if we uh, didn't put our social security number yet? That's a good question. So uh, your Open CC Apply, we do advise it. So there's no mandate that you have to put your social security number, but it does slow down the process. We do notice that when you have your social security number on file, it does uh, process your student ID and our email within twenty four hours. Uh, if you don't put it in there and if you declare as a US citizen, it could take anywhere from one to two weeks. So it does slow down. Now if you're undocumented, you don't have, you just have to check, put a checkbox saying that you are not a US citizen and that should take care of that. So it depends on various. So that's a good question. So like I said, once you receive your college ID, please submit it to your teachers on Teams. Is it, it is an assignment. And then uh, because that's the next step. So this is how it looks like. So if you notice on Teams, I posted an assignment, if you do uh, submit your college ID, it looks something like this. And then uh, from there, you can actually uh, put your ID number and click on the courses and hit submit and we'll get that in file. And the next question say, uh, what if we can make a new account even though we didn't post social security? Yeah. So that may result, that's a, a very great question too, because it will result in another college ID number. And you don't want to conflict that because you want to make sure that you default, because what happened is it will be two college ID number, two different transcript. And then when you transfer college, it's a which one, which one's you? And then it's, there's going to be a lot of issues. So make sure that if you already have a college ID, just use that one. So um, when you create a new account, uh, you don't have to put it, you didn't, that's fine. But you can always update it. You can actually update it at your social security number. If it's already processed, that's good. So it depends. But like I said, from my past experience, like you're not mandated to provide one, but in our past experience to smooth the process. And especially for the future run to, uh, for the future process where you want to apply for college and financial aid, you will still, you will need to provide your social security number in order, order to qualify for financial aid. So very, very important. So this is the next phase. After doing the CC Apply and once you submit your college ID number to us, this is the next form that you will receive to sign. This form puts uh, puts your child, students officially into dual enrollment. And I'll explain uh, how this works. Nice. Here's another question. So if you create an account with our counselors last week, yeah. So if you created one of your counselors, uh, yes, you should, if you already received one, just submit that ID because remember your college ID does not change. So even if you did it with your counselors last week and if you receive your college ID number, just submit that college ID number. Because that's it, because that college ID numbers is lifetime. It does not change. So uh, this registration form here on the screen, this is how it looks like. And uh, because of distance learning, we're not really in face to face. Normally we would help you fill out this application. And because we have to be very careful how to fill out this application. So in order to ease students and parents across the board, we will actually pre-fill this. So such as your name, your college ID and all the other information. So all you need to do is just read and sign. It is that simple. So normally in the past years, you would uh, fill out this application, sign and turn it back to us. But because of distance learning, we're making things easier for you guys that we will just pre-fill the form and we will send an email to your school email. So you, uh, so once you submit your application, your CC Apply application and your college ID number, um, you will receive a dual enrollment via your school email. And within five to twenty business days. So it looks something like this on the screen. Yes, so and so requests you, your signature. And then you just click on that document. You can actually use your cell phone and sign with your finger. And then so like I said, all information, we will pre-fill all the information that needed on there, such as your course, your college ID, everything on there automatically. So you don't have to go around. All you need to tell you is sign here and here and you're done. Yeah. So um, like I said, um, just use the student ID from last week that if you did with CC Apply, but then you still have to go to CC Apply. So if you already have, also that's a good question right here. So if a student asks if you already did the CC Apply last week, you still have to do the CC Apply, but you will have to do the CC Apply for the dual enrollment. Because what you did last week was the dual enrollment for um, what was it? You did the dual enrollment for fall of twenty twenty one. So which is different. Just letting you know. Where am I? Okay, so just let you know that you still have to apply, but then your college ID remains the same. So the only thing that you don't have to do is uh, well, you still have to uh submit your college ID, but your college ID does not. So you can actually submit your college ID now. If you receive an email of your college ID number, you can actually do that and submit now. But in when the Open CC Apply comes along the way, starting midnight, you will still have to apply for the spring twenty twenty one high school enrichment dual enrollment course. So just keep in mind. So I hope that I answered the question. Okay? Alright, so on the form, once you sign, you will see something like this. It says here, sign here, print your name and date. And remember, so there will be two emails by the way. So first email is students have to sign first. They will have to sign, print their name and date and hit submit. Once it hits submit, it will trigger the second email. And then the second email, that's when parents sign. So if you notice that when you open the document. Uh, the first step is that they will allow students to sign first in that student area. Once the student sign, print name and date. Students hit submit and then will trigger another email to their same student email. And they open that and then they hand that to their parents to sign. And sign, print and date, then hit submit. And once that second email is sent. Then everyone, all parties, I should get a copy and the student will also get a copy of this document too. So all parties will get a copy of this document agreeing. So all you have to do is just read the terms and conditions of dual enrollment. Sign, print and date, hit submit. Then then you'll get another email, sign, print and date. So it will tell you. So once you open that document, it will tell you this is a student signature or this is a parent's signature. So um yes, the registration is needed for college. Yeah, so you need, so first, like I said, you need to do the CC Apply first and apply for spring. And once you complete that process and submits your college ID. And this form will come out. This registration form will need. So you will need this form for the dual enrollment class for spring. So this form is not for your college for in the fall. This is for the dual enrollment class. So like you're taking HIT ten while still in high school. And I'll go over the to-do list at the end, what you need to do at the end. But those are good, good questions. So our next steps, the to-do list. What is that you need to do? So this is like your homework. Oh, the next steps is that here's the process. We just did step one, town hall meeting. Step two. You are going to apply for spring twenty twenty one on the Open CC Apply. So make sure like I said, the word and phrase, you pick twenty twenty uh, spring twenty twenty one high school enrichment slash dual enrollment. And hit apply. Once you submit that, then you submit your student ID number to your teachers. So on your teams, classroom teams, you should already seen that assignment posting to submit your college ID number. Step four. Uh, the CT coordinator will prepare the registration form that I was talking about and send that form to the student's email. So that form we will pre-fill. So once you did the CC Apply and submit your college ID number. We will then prepare the registration form, the dual enrollment registration form to your school email. And all you have to do is read. So students, step five, that's when the first email comes. Students will receive an email. They sign, print and date, hit submit, then it triggers another email the second time. And that's when you open that email. That's where parents, guardians, sign, date, uh, sign, print and date. And hit submit, then everyone gets a copy. So this is, is a six-step process. So what do you need to do? So for those who already have a CC Apply, like for those who did with their counselors last week or had a dual enrollment course last year as a junior. Uh, make sure you find your username and password because you will need it. And for those who did it last year with their counselors, I hope that's still fresh in your mind. So I hope you did not forget your username and password. And if you did, if you do forget it, use the forget my password feature. And make sure that you uh remember which email address. So once you do that, forget my password, it will trigger to your personal email. And it tells you to recreate a new password. For those who are, who hasn't uh done this Open CC Apply yet. Please have your social security number ready if you are a US citizen. And watch the YouTube video. And that YouTube video is also on the handout of how to complete the dual enrollment of applicant, online application. So please view that video. It tells you steps on how to get to that link. And to be safe, I will also post that link as well. And uh, if you notice on your teams. You look at the letter to parents to do enrollment, there's also a handout that talks about this YouTube video as well. It walks you step by step of how to complete the F, uh, the Open CC Apply online. Also prepare the following information to complete your Open CC Apply application. So you will need your cumulative GPA from Atlas. So they're not asking for academic GPA. They're looking for the cumulative GPA and you can look that up on your Atlas account, your family annual income. And you can decline if you don't want to, decline your annual income. Your home address, your resident information, your parent guardian information, like your education letter, et cetera. So these are the questions when you do the Open CC Apply, they will ask this information. And some of these information, they're not mandatory, you can decline. But uh, the reason they ask the application in case you want to attend special programs like the club at Fresno City College. They do want these or any honor programs at Fresno City College. They do want this information. Now, important things to keep in mind. Please complete the Open CC Apply application as carefully as possible. Please not triple check your work for spelling errors because it is very important. Because once you submit the following uh details is going to be permanent on your transcript and on your diploma certificate, et cetera. So please, uh, and if you want to change it, it's going to be legal process. You have to call admissions office. And confirm that you misspell your name and then to be sure, you have to show proof. So then they ask you a copy of your birth certificate or a copy of your social security or your driver license to make sure that all your name is correct. So please do it. If you do it right the first time, there's no issues. Because when you did it wrong, if you do it wrong, you misspell one letter, it's permanent. And then if you want to change it, you have to call admissions office and there's a lengthy process. It's not fun actually, uh, because we have a couple students that misspelled some of their application. And what happened is they had to get a copy of their birth certificate to verify that this is how it's spelled, et cetera. So please, 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 please. Do it properly. Your first, middle, last name, make sure it's checked, especially your date of birth. As well as your social security number and your email address. Now, your email address is not really permanent. You can change it by the way. But in case if you misspell your email address and you forgot your password and you reset, it goes nowhere. And then you can, oh, I did not get an email. So make sure you spell your email correctly as well. So these are things is that you have to make sure that you pay attention. Alright, so that's the end of the presentation. I'll look, see if there's any more questions. Um. Okay, let me go down. So there's quite a few. So let me uh change a little bit, go to my full screen. Alright, so okay. So there's a lot of questions down the road and I'll try to see um answer as I go. So the next question is uh so I messed up on my Open CC Apply account. I didn't know what I was doing. And I want to redo it. So I mean, the question is, I'm not so sure, but it depends on your situation. So if you did mess it up. Because remember, if you did add your social security number, it stays on record. So you can always log in and change your information. Uh, but then there's some information that did, if it's like, for example, if it's your date of birth or your name, you're going to have to call the admissions office. Uh, and then make that changes. But certain things that you can change, for example, like your family income, you can change that. Your address, you can change that, your email address, as long you remember your username and password, you can change any information in there. So you know, you can always change, but please do not create a brand new one. You can always log in. Now, the only things that you cannot change is your, like your last, first and last name, your date of birth and your social security. And if there's that case, you're gonna need to call uh the Fresno City College admissions. And walk through that process and they might ask for your social security card and birth certificate and all of that. So, yeah, so that's a good question. You know, if you actually mess it up, if, if it's just minor issues, just log in and change the information. So there's no big deal on that one. But if you do mess up on your name, your spelling name, yeah, uh, I advise you to please call uh, the Fresno City College admissions office to make that change. So this one, this has to be done by today. Uh, we have no time. Like I said, you look at the dates. We do have dates that we do this in class, in online class. If you look at earlier, my PowerPoint slide earlier, uh, let me see if I can project this to you guys. So uh, we do have, so if you're afraid that um, you're gonna get it wrong, don't do it now. Wait till the day. So let me see if I can share my screen. I'm setting my screen right now. Okay, so these are the dates that we'll be doing live with your teacher and I will be in your classrooms as well. Uh, to help you walk through this. And if you have a sibling, you know, brother or sister can actually help you with the process as well. So you know, it's good to have parents, guardians or an adult nearby you to help complete this application process. Because I know we're on distance learning. Uh, so like for, for those in medical assisting, we'll be doing on October 6th for medical health careers. Uh, we're doing on October 12th. Fifteen and fourteen, depending what class period you're in. Personal finance will be doing in October 8th. October 7th. Banking and finance, October 8th. Cinematography, October 9th. Education psychology, October 7th. So yeah, if you don't want to do it now, wait till this date because we will do it in class together. But like I said, make sure you prepare your social security account and all your username in that one, okay? So um, you don't want that account. Um, I'm not so sure, uh please do contact your counselors because I don't really understand what, how did you mess up your account? Because remember, when you create that account. It does tie with your social security number and all that. So there's going to be a lot of process. So please make sure. Uh, please contact your counselors and your counselor will help you see what you mess up, what we can fix. Because something is fixable. Okay, it is fixable. So make sure that uh and sometimes it's just minor. So unless you uh, please set up an appointment with your counselor. Uh, because I don't know, I, because uh, unless I actually see how did you mess up your CC Apply account. So just make sure you uh make an appointment with your counselors or you can make an appointment with me. You know, if you want to see uh you know my email, uh, you can actually find me on teams. And just schedule an appointment, say, are you available? So like, I'm available after school most likely. So during after lunch. If you want to just chat, say you want to make an appointment, we can do a live chat and walk through the process. Or you can, so it doesn't have to be me, it could be your counselor as well and see if we can fix something about it, okay? Because uh, I know that you don't want that account, but then because the account is already created, it has to be in that same account. So because it ties with, so it's hard. It's, you cannot just create a brand new account. And if we can possibly fix it, so we'll work through something. Yeah, but you know, it's good questions. Alright, okay, uh. So normally you cannot, okay, so here's the next question. So they, someone already hit apply and applied the wrong application because I think some you clicked on the regular spring twenty twenty one. Uh, just, you know, there's no harm or foul. So even though you do complete the application. You're uh, you don't have to redraw, you're not officially enrolled. It's just that is the process of the Open CC Apply is to identify. So that City College know that you are interested in applying for dual enrollment. The actual true one is uh, the actual registration is this one right here. It's this registration form. Once you hit this, let me see if I can go to the next slide. This form here, when you receive this form and you sign it, that's when you're officially enrolled in dual enrollment. The Open CC Apply is to indicate that you're interested in applying. But then like I said, you cannot not complete an Open CC Apply and do this registration form. So you cannot, you have to do both. So if you did an Open CC Apply, don't worry, there's no harm or foul. So if I apply for Open CC Apply and not turn in this registration form later. Uh, that's okay. You know, because um uh, assume and in City College will assume that, oh, this student is no longer interested because I, they don't see in an applicant, this registration form right here. So that will be okay. But then if now, here's the catch. If you did not do the Open CCC Apply. But then turn in this registration form, you cannot be enrolled because you need to do the Open CC Apply first. Then the second step is this registration form. Very, very important. Now, if you do the Open CC Apply and decide not to turn this in, no harm or foul. So do not worry. Yeah, so do not worry. Okay, so there's no issues. Alright? Yeah, I know there's a lot of questions, okay? Okay, how do we submit? Okay, uh, oh yeah, so fortunately, I actually um put it to one user, one responded. I can change that setting. So uh, probably after this meeting, maybe uh, wait until tonight, I can change the settings and you can resubmit on teams again. Okay, no worries. Yes, the CC Apply application, okay. So the question is, is the CC Apply application different than the dual enrollment application? Yes. But then you cannot do the D, uh, dual enrollment application until you do the CC Apply first. The first step is to, before you fill out the DE registration form, you need to fill out the CC Apply first. You cannot bypass the CC Apply and go to the registration form. And this is why we are having this town hall meeting to make sure that you are completing the CC Apply first. And once that CC Apply, this because I do receive. So once that CC Apply application for high school enrichment dual enrollment is submitted. We will get that information, then we will pre-fill this form and then send you an email with this registration form right here. And then you, all you have to do is sign. But uh, we will not send this registration form to your email if you do not do the Open CC Apply. I hope that makes sense. So let me just to verify again. You have to complete the Open CC Apply in order to get this E, this registration email. So you will receive this dual enrollment application via your email if you do not do the Open CC Apply. So I hope that I'm, I am clear on that. So you cannot just bypass and complete this registration form. You need to do the Open CC Apply. But there are two different things. That is correct. It's just the Open CC Apply is to get started on the application form. That you're interested in a dual enrollment. And especially for new students, we'll get in college ID number. So because it's to generate the college ID number as well. So that's the purpose of the CC Apply. There's once that, then when you get that data who submitted. We will then send an email with this registration form already pre-filled. So it's going to be easy. All we tell you to do is sign here, here, print date, submit, then parents sign here, print here, date, submit and then once you submit that, then you will be officially enrolled in a Fresno City College class. So I hope that makes sense. So even though if you complete the CC Apply, you're not yet of enrolled in a dual enrollment class until this registration form is completed. Okay? Yeah, like I said, where's the dual registration form? We won't, uh, yeah, you won't find that until you complete the Open CC Apply. Like I said earlier, you need to do the Open CC Apply first and you will receive this within your email. So we will receive, like I said, we will send the dual enrollment registration form through your email with your information on. All you need to do is sign. Okay, so what if you are taking two AP courses, so you don't want to do enrollment? Yeah, that's up to you. You can opt out, you know? Uh, you can uh, just don't, you know, just deny the application. So if you, if you do not want to pursue, just let your teacher know that you don't want to participate. And, and then we'll make, keep it note that. But keep in mind that if you're in a medical pathing course or a video production. You're still obligated to do the course, the college course, the course content because it's part of our curriculum. It's just that you will not get the college course because remember, our CT course, our pathways is built upon at a college level. Our curriculum, you know, so that's why our pathways, because remember, like for example, we are make sure that students are getting a career. We're not in our, the purpose of our pathways is that we make sure that they get the certification for a career. So like our medical pathway class, for example, our medical education research academy, when they complete the program. Uh, and if they pass the medical sitting exam, they get the medical assisting certificate. They, and they can actually use that certificate to actually works uh, in a medical assisting. And uh, for example, like a class of twenty twenty. Uh, we had one students who completed the program successfully and now is working full-time as a medical assistant. So that's why it's the rigor. That's why our course is the rigor of a college level class. Even though if you opt in or opt out. Uh, for our CT course, students are still required to take the, the content, the college course content. And that's built in upon, so like our medical health careers in second semester, all of them will be focusing on medical term. And that's built in upon, so like our medical health careers in second semester, all of them will be focusing on medical terminology, whether you're in dual enrollment or not. And they still have to do it for their high school grade. They just don't get the college credit if they opt out. So I hope that makes sense. So the next question is, and I'll take, hopefully this last one, I'll take a few more and we call it uh day. So is the CC apply the thing we did with our counselors? If so, do we log in and change the status of dual enrollment or it is something different? Okay, yeah, so the one that you did with your counselors, actually you applied for the fall of twenty twenty one, which is your real college class when you graduate. So you will still need to log into your open CC apply and then apply for the spring twenty twenty one. So you know, if you log into your CC apply, so you still use that same username and password uh to log in. But like I said, you still have to go, but you cannot just Google. Like I said, you still have to go to the Fresno City College website. And click that direct link and then it will prompt you to the uh open CC apply account. Then you use your same username and password that you created with your counselor last week. And then you are going to start a new application. And that new application, you are going to choose spring twenty twenty one high school enrichment slash dual enrollment. And then once you complete that, then you look at your profile on your CC apply, you notice there's two application now. You apply for fall of twenty twenty one and you have a second application for spring twenty twenty one high school enrichment dual enrollment. So you're still using that same account. You're just applying for additional semester. Because I think the one that you did your counselor last week, you were actually applying for fall of twenty twenty when you graduated from high school. So you know, so you'll be applying for another. So you still have to log into your open CC apply and apply for that spring twenty twenty one dual enrollment. So I hope that makes sense. Because remember, in your open CC apply, you can view all your application. You can apply as many submissions. Or there's an option, you can apply for winter of twenty twenty as well or summer twenty twenty one. So there's a lot of options that you can actually apply for. Let's see here if any more question. I'll take a few more. Okay, so info. Okay, so you want my info? I can gladly, I will put in this announcement. Uh let's see, let me make an announcement real quick. Let me change my screen. Alright, so I'll make an announcement, I'll put my email address. You can actually reach out to me at monteref dot, and that will be in the chat box as well. I'm typing it right now. You can reach out to me at monteref dot arun at presidified dot org or you can schedule your counselor. So there you have it. That's my email address. Feel free to uh reach out to me, schedule appointments, just to look over your application if you have any questions. Okay? So let's see any more questions. Alright, I think that's pretty much it and thank you. Uh I know this is a lot of information. But and then because we do have to have this information to front load you a lot of key things. So that way you can think about it, is dual enrollment something for me? You know, do I want to take dual enrollment or I'm fine just, just taking a regular high school course? Still want to do the college? So like for our pathways. Uh one of the question is what if I do not want to do dual enrollment? Yeah, and then I'm okay just taking the college content, but just getting a high school grade. Or some you say like, what if I do want to do both? Because it's the same thing. It's that in our pathways, whether you're in dual enrollment or not, you're still going to be doing the same thing regardless. The same assignments, same homework. It's just that you're getting a college grade on top of that. Now, if you were going to fill the class, yeah, I wouldn't recommend. But we do expect that you do take dual enrollment. We expect you to get a grade at least C or higher. Because the college credit is C right. So our high school grade, a D is still considered passing grade because you still get high school credit with a D. But then in a college level course, it has to be a C or higher. So those are the major difference and that's something you have to think. And same thing with the English one A folks. Uh it's English one A for me and something you will have to schedule with your counselors, C. And so this is something. And like I said, well, if you decide, there's still time. Like I said, the application is not due until November thirteen. We have until November thirteen. And this is why we have this town hall meeting today because once the application opened up tonight. If for those who are kind of pretty sure, like confident that I will do it, because I know some of you are like eager to do it. Uh and that will be available for you as well. And if you're not sure, you want to think about it, you know, we can meet during online in those scheduled dates later. And uh this video is also recorded, so you can refer back. I'll post this on Teams, all the classroom teams. Uh your specific prospective teachers, you know, your medical health careers, your medical assisting class. And you can actually view this recording later and take, in case you need to go back. But I hope that was, you know, something to think about it. But like I said, this is a great opportunity. Like I said, there's a lot of benefits. But there's also a potential, you know, impact as well. So you know, think about that, whether dual enrollment is right for me or not. And that's something that is, you want to talk to your parents, your guardians, your teachers, you know, see if you can succeed. But this is the information that we want to relay out for you that so that you know what you're signing up against. Alright, thank you everyone and have a good night.